Hey, City Clerk, are we back online? With that, we are back from our closed session. And with that, we will adjourn the Selma City Council's special meeting. And we will reconvene for our Selma City Council regular meeting in five minutes at six twenty-eight. Sorry for the delay, but we've been at it since four thirty. So we'll be, take a quick break and we'll be right back. Thank you, everybody.
No reportable action.
Hey, we all set? We will convene our... Okay. Almost there. Who's this? Oh. Can we give her a minute or two? She's online. Is she trying to call in? Okay. Okay. With that, is Council okay if we move forward? And then if she gets back online, we can go back and have a prayer? Okay. Like, okay, so we'll convene our Selma City Council regular meeting. It's June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. It's six twenty-nine PM in the Selma City Council chambers. Seventeen ten Tucker Street in Selma, California. The teleconference phone number is three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. The webinar ID is eight nine one six eight six four five zero zero five. When on the phone, if you wish to address Council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Tonight, we are going to wait for Pastor Lisa Satterberg to get back on and move forward to our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Treheal. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you call the roll, please, City Clerk?
Councilmember Gara?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoz Navarro?
Here.
Councilmember Treheal?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member has a potential conflict of interest, may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted upon in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code, section five four nine five four dot two B. Now, we're going to move on to oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the City Council regarding any item over which the Council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the City Manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes and to direct all comments towards the City Council and not City employees. Do we have any oral communications at this time? Step up, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michael Edward Muhman. I'm here because you... Last week, to attend...
You don't have to hold it down. Once it's on, it's on.
Okay. You invited me and I didn't attend, but I'm pretty much aware, aware that you're aware of my fiance's and my situation. Just as Mrs. Fernando Santian is. I contacted your office as well as his office about the mistreatment me and my fiance began since we've been here. My fiance was assaulted and even assaulted by a registered somaticist narrow on April fifth. And we paid major police report, but per the police sergeant, sergeant Guzman said that they were not going to file with the District Attorney's Office. They are monitoring us on Facebook under their, under the fugitives. Why? This is my dear county police department is. We didn't do nothing. We're not fugitives. We're not any sex, we're not a sex offenders. We're not any registered, registry. We're here to, we came here to fleeing from domestic violence, asking for help. On June second, I was assaulted, attacked by Officer Emeril Salas, badge number N one one five. We're going to ask for a loan for my wife, my fiance to celebrate her birthday. I would deny one call came in was an unwanted person. Is that a crime to be unwanted person? When they asked me, invited me back down there to apply for the loan, told me to go get my security card, come back. But because I had tried to then ask why I was denied, they called law enforcement. I'm Officer Emeril Salas, badge number N one one five, was the first respond. He said he didn't know my name on TikTok Live. He assaulted me on TikTok Live. This is the reason, this mom, I've been shot in Cleveland, Texas. My fiance was telling him he was shot. He broke my phone. He didn't care when I told him he knew who I was because he was in an interview room when I gave my statement for my fiance being assaulted. He claims he didn't know who I was, but he was sitting right there in the room. Been to my place of shelter twice. So he knows who I am. Why would he lie? Why would he assault me? Why he attack me? With their, their monitoring every, every Facebook Live that we do, we're on the fugitive page. We're not fugitives. We were in Austin, Texas, and we're interviewed by, by the Secret Service who gave us forty dollars to get a room. If we're fugitives, they would have locked us up. We came back to California because we're born here to get help. We didn't get help. My fiance cut her hair eighteen inches because she still hasn't got help. I'm scared, we're scared to death to go to the hospital. We're scared to death of these people behind me. Because right now they're, right now they're stalking us on Facebook. I have thirty-nine active drones outside, outside my location at any given night, active. I post my Facebook, they don't post that live, but they put everything else live. They've been made, they've been made aware of it. We are, we're terrified for our lives.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Muhman. Appreciate you coming to City Council tonight, hearing your concerns. Do we have any other oral communications at this time? Do we have anybody online or on the phone who would like to make a comment?
As a reminder to those callers online, please use your raise your hand feature and we will add you to the meeting queue. Mayor, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to our special presentations. Our first presentation tonight is a certificate of recognition for Leila Market, which has been in business thirty years in Selma. Mayor Pro Tem Cho is going to make this presentation.
Oh, yeah. Hello. First, I'll say thank you to the Selma City Council for recognizing the thirty-year anniversary of Leila Market. This is such an honor. Leila Market would not be the thriving business it is today without the hard work of our father, Mohammed Al Amri, right here. In the summer of nineteen seventy-five, Mohammed immigrated from Yemen to the United States. After working nearly two decades across different cities in California and various wage work jobs, Mohammed finally found himself in position to pursue his goal of starting his own business. In nineteen ninety-three, Mohammed and his family relocated to Selma, where he opened a small grocery store and convenience store on Park Street. Leila Market was one of the first stores in the neighborhood to offer fresh fruits and vegetables to nearby families. For thirty years, Mohammed has served and worked alongside marginalized communities in the region as an essential worker, providing access to convenience products and foods. Mohammed was also one of the first Yemeni-American business owner, owners in Selma, a city now with a growing Yemeni-American community. We would like to thank the city of Selma for its role in fostering the growth of small businesses in Selma, and most importantly, the local community for keeping Leila Market in business. That's all. Thank you.
You want to come on up and get a, get a photo in front of the Council?
At the Selma City Council and the city of Selma, we hereby recognize, command, and congratulate Leila Market for a successful thirty years of service.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody in the City Council and the city of Selma. And I will be honest with you, a long story. When I came from Irvine, I thought I make mistakes in something. I'm visiting and I facing a little difficulty in the area and a problem. Then we stand up. And without these guys, he's the number one and the chief. Other one, why? We stand up for the area and we clear up the area. And we used to go to meetings also. And we used to go Salah Sahar all time. And the chief asking me all time, come. I said, no, I have another reason. I'm ready to visit this. I want to support my family, but if you need help, we are here with you. And Selma isn't like Brooklyn, New York. It's only cover block. People buy milk and people steal it. People buy something and people steal it. And it's bothering me. And I used to follow them. And I you talk to this kid, what did you want? What are you sitting in the street? Go back to school. My daughter, she is only two years old. She's finishing, she's a lawyer right now. Daughter, she is PhD. She teach in Merced and she have a cognition from the city long time. And my other son is a lawyer in San Diego.
Wonderful.
One, one, she is finishing the school and my wife teaches in Selma. So thank you so much.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Public safety.
Yes.
Should we stand up? And our next certificate of recognition is for, you're gonna have to stand up again. Cho's Restaurant, which has been in business for sixty years. And City Manager Santian will be presenting this certificate.
Good evening. This is a very special recognition that we're giving tonight. You know, for those of you that were able to attend Cho's Kitchen's sixtieth anniversary celebration on Saturday. It was a wonderful event. There were so many people from the community there, so many supporters, so many people who came from out of town, who, you know, were raised here in Selma or who live elsewhere and just have fond memories of Cho's Kitchen. A lot of folks don't know that Cho's original location was along Witsen Avenue or Witsen Street, excuse me. And they relocated after a few years of being in business there to their current location. And they've just become, as Assemblyman Arambula mentioned on Saturday, an institution in this community. They certainly are. They've communicated, they've created a sense of community. They've given folks a place to gather, to enjoy good food. And, you know, I was speaking to Mayor Pro Tem Cho this afternoon and she was filling me in on how the business has evolved over time. You know, they, they didn't close during COVID. They, they kept their employees employed. They, they were able to be nimble and to just establish a takeout system. But they, they stayed open and they kept folks employed. So that's definitely something to be proud of. She also filled me in on some of the technological improvements that they've made over the years and that they're planning on making as well, which is fantastic. But, you know, I just wanted to say congratulations on sixty years, Mayor Pro Tem Cho. It's quite an accomplishment and this community really appreciates you for everything that you've done. And I'm just going to go ahead and read the recognition from, from the City Council. The city of Selma, the City Council of the city of Selma recognizes Cho's Kitchen on your sixty-year anniversary. On behalf of the Selma City Council and the citizens of Selma, we hereby recognize, command, and congratulate Cho's Kitchen for its successful sixty years of service to Selma. Presented this nineteenth day of June, twenty twenty-three.
I'd like to thank the community of Selma and several other communities around the area. And my family, of course, fortunate that lasts us long. My group is still partying, so they didn't come tonight. So, and, and like I say, we're very fortunate and like the, you know, our mom's family. Our family came and, you know, they say this, you come to the country and try to do the best you can. And they said, like he says, he worked very hard to send your kids to school. And then my brothers and I, like, we all are college grads. So this is the most educated Chinese kitchen you ever see. And most of them don't speak English. So we're pretty proud of that. And now it's my son and I are the main one working it. So we'll continue on for a little while and then he can take it. I'm done by then. So thank you so much for your support of the community here.
Hey, our next item is introduction of new staff.
Council, to my right, you have Alicia Gary, who is the Economic Development Manager. She started last Monday. Last Monday, so she's been here a whole week. So she's briefed on all our happenings and she's going to make great things occur. But we're blessed to have her. I'll let her do her own introduction of her experience. But we, I believe in terms of community development staff, I think we're building a team, as the City Manager likes to point out. This is another great member of this very talented, very experienced team for City of Selma.
Evening, Council. Like deputies, City Manager Jerome mentioned, I'm Alicia and my background is in nonprofit business development. I was at the chamber for a couple of years as Government Affairs Manager and I'm excited to come on board at the time where Selma is growing and working with you guys to contribute to the strategic growth of Selma.
Great, welcome. Okay. And with that, we will move on to our last special presentation tonight, which is the Police Department rebranding announcement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Thank you so much for this time. So I'm a visual learner, so we're gonna, I brought you a visual for us all to take a look at. So today, we're going to talk about the Selma Police Department and its next chapter and how we grow Selma into the future with regards to law enforcement and public safety. It worked. So if you, if you'll notice on my sleeves here, you have new patches, which is something that's been in the works like over two decades. You know, I, as a young officer in Selma, you know, it's, we came in, we're the reason capital of the world and that kind of has faded over the past few years. So when I came to Selma, I thought, you know, maybe it's time to, to look and have a tangible symbol, something tangible that says that we're, we're changing, things are different. And what I'll say is I coached youth baseball for many years and these kids got to have the Saturday jersey and the Sunday jersey and the championship jersey. It doesn't make them play any better, but if that's what they need to get a little bit more out of them, that's what we're going to do. So I joke, gentlemen, I'm just kidding. That's not why we did it. We did it as a means to kind of identify and market our police department because we are going to do things differently here in the city of Selma with regards to law enforcement. So this is that first tangible sign towards working in that direction. Little delay, but I got it. So I say that and many times I've spoken in front of you about what we do and how we do. And there's a lot of thought that goes into everything that we do. We don't do things just to do things. And I think that philosophy carries over in what we do and how our officers are working out in the streets, right? We're not just doing something to do it. We're dealing with meaning and purpose behind it. And ideally, we do it for, we do it in a manner which affects not just one thing, but several things. So we maximize and we efficientize our time, our resources. So with that, the, the, the patch, I wish it was a little bit bigger, but, you know, the bear in that patch is representative of our community for two reasons. We're the Selma Bears. It's something we're very proud of. But beyond that, we're Selma, California. We're not Selma, North Carolina, Selma, Texas, Selma, Washington. We're Selma, California, and the bear is indicative of California. So that's why we chose the bear as representation of our community. Secondly, we turn the bear to walk towards or walk forward symbolizing progress. What we're going to do with the Selma Police Department is we're going to be progressive in what we do. And if you walked in today and you looked across the street, there were two patrol vehicles there. We'll talk a little bit more about that, but those, the graphics on that vehicle should be indicative of progress, right? We're, we're moving forward. The, the old is out and we're finding new ways to reinvent ourselves in every facet that we can. The road in this patch is indicative of commerce. We are, we are a commercial city. From vehicles to small business, to box store businesses, retail, medical facilities. That's all commerce and all that commerce, and we'll get to a little bit, is necessary for our community to thrive and, and become a great community as, as we're working towards that to better. And lastly, the sun at top of the S is rising over the valley, which signifies a new day for the Selma Police Department. And that's what that valley, that's what that sun over the valley means because we're in the Central Valley. And, and that's, that's the purpose of that. So again, this, this patch, this symbol is going to be branded all over our police department, our facility. And then the narrative will follow with our personnel. So they have, you know, they can, when people ask, hey, what does that mean? They can give some narrative to that. And then hopefully, you know, we work towards a culture that, that encompasses all of these philosophies. So I broke down a little bit about community and, and the... And the community is important, because we, along with our community, will work towards building the best quality of life. I say that because I've spoken in many venues, and I've talked about how we, along with our community members, will need to sacrifice and work towards getting a, creating a better quality of life, a safe, a safer environment, so our kids can ride their bikes, play in the front yards, play at our parks and feel safe. And our parents feel safe to allow their children to do so. So that only comes by having good, strong relationships that we can build on and then feel free to share information so that we can solve problems at the most de minimis level before it becomes unmanageable. Second, we progress. We'll use technology, analytics, and develop our personnel to ensure that the safety of our community as we grow into the future. Everything we talk about will be about the future. There's nothing wrong with the past, other than it's a learning tool for us, so that we don't make mistakes. And we take the best from the past and kind of build into the future of the Selma Police Department. And lastly, I mentioned commerce. Oops. We will work towards an atmosphere of safety to ensure our commercial and business stakeholders are prosperous and are able to provide the best amenities for our community. I say that because we want people to feel safe to exit our freeways, shop at our businesses, come to our hospitals, our hotels, stay the evening, have dinner, and then go along their way, because we're on freeway ninety-nine, so we have a lot of transient population, right? People traveling to and from for work, for vacation, for, to visit. And we wanna make sure those people feel safe, so they'll come back and visit us again. And if they purchase some items while they're here, all the better. So. And with that, this is expectations. We'll get there by setting expectations. They're indicative of the philosophy and culture we're trying to pursue here at the Selma Police Department. I took a picture of this, because this is in our conference room. And what there is, there's a picture of the bear, because of the community, right? Next to that, it's hard to see, but there's a quote there by Theodore Roosevelt. It's the man in the arena. The man in the arena, to me, to us, says that no matter the naysayers, no matter the people at Monday Morning Quarterback, our people are expected to go out there at night and make the difficult decisions and do the difficult job that we ask of them, with little supervision and many times with no, no time to make critical decisions. But they do their best. So when we interview every new person that we hire at the Selma Police Department, I sit with my back to that wall, and we have that new applicant or candidate read the man in the arena, and I ask them to tell me what it means to them. So that's why we set those expectations. And there's a reason behind putting that in the conference room just outside of our office. There we go. So on the back of our, if you saw our vehicles outside, we're gonna be having new badges as well. They should be in Monday. So the new badge, again, is a new symbol that shows that the Selma Police Department has changed. So that's why we have that symbol there of the badge. And where the badge is gonna be a key phrase that we'll use as we start to recruit and prepare for the future. Here, and that's why we have recruitment. If you'll notice, this is gonna be a different vehicle than all of our other vehicles. We have the bear for our community, and on the sides of the vehicle, it says, wear the badge. The reason that it's in orange, as opposed to our other vehicles, is because our SRO will drive this to and from the schools. We'll have this at our community events, because we want people to call that eight nine one two two eight zero. And that's, that's to my office, because I like to speak with everybody who may be a possible employee of the Selma Police Department and find out why they're getting into this business and what their motivation is to make sure that it's in line with the culture that we're trying to cultivate. Beyond that, if you look, it's really difficult to see, but this, this was Officer Carrasco's patrol unit. After the tragedy, we really sat down as a management group, spoke with our SPOA, and tried to figure out how, how do we best use this unit and memorialize him in one small facet? And because Gonzalo was an explorer and a cadet, and then a reserve, and then a police officer, we thought it crucial and very important that we use his vehicle to go create and find the future of our police department. So that's why you have the Nora one eleven in there and the flag with the blue stripe. And again, on the back of that vehicle is gonna be wear the badge. So that's, again, we'll be using that phrase. It's catchy, and we think that it'll be, it'll cause people to ask questions that we can answer. So. All right. Again, this, if you saw the other vehicle that's outside, this will be our new graphic scheme for all of our patrol units. It's very progressive. That's why we use the matte, the matte, the matting color. Also, it's able, if we do have incidents, we can compartmentalize and repair this vehicle with regards to scratches or things of that nature, which also saves us money, because then we don't paint vehicles, which is very costly. And on the back of the vehicle is progress, community, and commerce. Those values that are specific to the Selma Police Department. Those are words that are easy for our personnel to learn and communicate the narrative behind that meaning and how we move our, the Selma Police Department forward into the future. I believe this is last. Correct? Lastly is professionalism. You know, I walked into the Selma Police Department on my first day, and it was a big gray room, which is much more beautiful than the old facility. So thank you all for that. However, I thought we could spruce it up a little bit. And we had an acrylic patch made that's in our lobby that will light up. And then we have this paneling behind, which is actually a sound neutralizer, because we have a lot of reverberation in that lobby. So this helps with that echo. But also, when we walk people into our police department, we want it to be a symbol of professionalism, because that's our expectation for all of our people. So anybody that walks in should expect a professional organization from the way we look to how we conduct ourselves. You know, there's a reason the Yankees always win, because everyone's always watching the pinstripes. So to me, aesthetics is our visual, in, you know, a visual cue of what people can expect. So, and I don't like the Yankees, but, you know, I had to throw it in there. And I believe that is it. So with that, if anyone has any questions, I just wanted to kind of give you this introduction, because on June thirtieth, that will be the last day that we use our old patches. The last time you'll see those old patches on a uniform out as our people are conducting business and inside the police department. We will have an old patch on Gonzalo's memorial. But both regards to the new facility or the facility, our patches, our badges, that will change on June thirtieth. That's our cue day. I want to let you all know what was, kind of what, when you see these new symbols, what they mean. I did, we've been working on this for eleven months since the day I got here. And I didn't want to bring this to you prematurely. I wanted to make sure that we were able to accomplish the timelines and get this, this program up and running. So, thank you.
Thanks very much for your presentation. Does anybody have any questions for the chief at this time?
Um, Chief, I'd just like to say, make a comment and say, I love the symbol. I love the new look. I'm gonna tell you, I love the mission and especially the dedication to our fallen officer Gonzalo. That means a lot. I think the only thing is, I'm gonna have to get used to the matte look, but that's okay. You know, I mean, if it's gonna save scratches, what the heck? And the professionalism, I think you guys did a great job. Really proud.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Did any of the officers have anything they wanted to say at this time?
Would you guys like to speak?
No, you're good.
I think I scare a mayor. I, I'm just kidding.
Anybody from the public? Anybody online or on the phone, like to weigh in on the new patches, the new look? Okay, great. Well, thank you for that. That's exciting. June thirtieth. Wow. Okay, great. So with that, we will move on from the special presentations to our consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Do any council members have an item or items they would like removed from the consent calendar tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I'm removing item nine and item eleven.
Okay. And I will remove items one and item eight. Okay, we'll start with item one.
Make a motion to approve the rest of it.
Right, is there a motion to approve items two through seven and ten? We have a.
I make a motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. Is there a second?
Five seconds.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, item one. SB one funding. So the reason I pulled this off is we've been talking about some streets in Selma, specifically Fancher, Khan, Osler, and Weber Streets, which are in that gray area between the city and the county, right? It seems like the city does this and the county does this. But we had Mr. Jimenez from the county here a few weeks ago, and he had some interesting things to say about how it's our responsibility as a city to take care of those roads, even though they are county roads, and that there is public funding to take care of those roads. My question, and the reason I pulled this off, is can we look into that, just to see what kind of funding there might be to take care of those roads, which have been neglected for years and years? And we're talking about a new look tonight. We're talking about progression. I think that those neighborhoods need it. They need help. They need, they need their roads fixed. And if we can help, you know, it seems like we've got, we're doing well with the street and the roads funds. If we could find a way. Mr. Jimenez sounded like he knew with the county, knew what he was talking about. You know, if we could find out specifically what he meant and maybe look into that in the future. There are a lot of, a lot of folks out there that would be, that would really benefit from that.
Sure. Yeah, and if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the county is still responsible for providing the services in that area, because it's technically a county island. I think what Mr. Jimenez was referring to, and we will absolutely reach out, is that the city and the county have to come to some sort of agreement as to what ultimately happens with that area, whether it's annexed into the city. And then at that point, the city could pursue funding to be able to, you know, fix those roads. As it stands, it's the county's responsibility. And the way that we're looking at our capital improvement projects list is looking at, you know, what is currently within the city that requires upgrades and repairs and those kinds of things. But absolutely, I think there are, there's always funding sources, you know, through the gas tax, through CDBG, through other, other sources for reconstruction. But the council would have to decide if it's gonna be a priority for, you know, for us to allocate those same sources of funding to existing streets within the city or to prioritize, you know, those streets within the county islands. But we can come to some sort of understanding with the county about funding.
Yeah, I would love to know more about that, just because it's been on the radar for a long time. And I think Cal Water provides water out there, and it's kind of a quasi-city location. Just a strange, strange area.
To the city manager, could it become, could we just, I was under the assumption after he came and did his presentation that we had discussed that for that would be something we could talk about for next budget and maybe meet with the county and have some collaboration, where we could tell them these are the needs for our community. It is part of our sphere of influence, but at the same time, what the cost is. Maybe, maybe get, maybe get our engineer to start giving us some numbers as to what it, you know, what it costs to make this, these roads to look and be better. And at the same time, look at what the cost and what this county would do in regards to bringing it into the city.
City manager, I also think that he mentioned about a source of funding, that the county possibly has some funding there. It's just going out there and applying for it or getting, you know, the cooperation from the county. I think it has to be justified as well, that, you know, these, these homeowners don't have a sidewalk, you know, and, and they really need one, because it's, it's pretty bad out there. So I think it's just doing a study and justifying that why they need it, possibly can get some kind of funding there.
We will look into that.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody have anything else they'd like to say? Anybody like to say anything from the public? Anybody online? On the phone? Okay. But then we'll move on to item eight, consideration of a special legal services agreement with Hanson Bridget. City Attorney Dodd?
Yes, so this agreement came out of direction from council to pursue some sort of, well, actually, it was specifically requested to be Hanson Bridget to assess the complaint that was filed by Mayor Scott Robertson. So, and there was a typo in your name spelling, and I apologize for that. But that is what this agreement essentially is. So they have estimated that the project will take approximately fifty to a hundred hours and cost approximately twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars in fees. And the agreement that they're proposing is, was attached to a staff report. I have reviewed it and do not have any issues with the agreement itself.
So this concerns me. This is all about me. So I'm gonna read a statement. "This agenda item continues the almost nonstop harassment I have faced since the election of two thousand and twenty. Since that time, I've been called a homophobic slur, threatened to be hit in the face. And now with this hiring of Selma's seventh attorney in three years, the harassment will only grow worse, as now another attorney goes after me to appease three council members, Trujillo, Mendoza Navarro, and Cho. I filed a police report on the Selma volunteer who threatened to hit me in the face. And as a result, this person was promoted to a paying position in the city. If that isn't the creation of a hostile workplace, I don't know what is." I don't like doing this. "One of the many questions this costly item raises is why hasn't the city council hired an attorney to investigate the accusations of the city manager against me? If an outside attorney is being hired to investigate my claims of harassment, why doesn't the city manager receive equal treatment by the three council members and have his accusations investigated by an outside attorney as well? When I went through the proper channels and presented my claim to the city for harassment, discrimination, and retaliation, the city council considered my claim an open session and voted three one to reject my request for an MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding. Surely, the council thoroughly investigated this claim before voting to reject it? If the council felt that they did not understand my claim at the time I presented it, why didn't they table it then and retain an attorney, an attorney to investigate the matter at that time? This action will cost the city needlessly twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money, and it signifies the council did not think through or thoroughly consider my previous claim. How could they have? Over half my complaint, which details the accusations of the city manager against me, were blacked out by the attorney of the city. The council refused to sit down with me in closed session, as I requested, to discuss this employment issue. I did the legally proper thing of recusing myself from the open session agenda item, and in so doing, turned the other cheek and opened the floor for anyone who wished to speak against me. Note, none of those people who spoke that night ever came to me to make those comments to my face. I could have continued with legal action against the city, but instead, I have worked to mend fences and worked with the city council to make our sittings, our city proceedings more collegial and friendly. I thought this sad time for Selma was over, and we had all turned a corner to improve council relations. But this agenda item continues the past dark acts of the three council members. Let's not regurgitate this item and drag the city further through the mud by a further act of harassment. I have moved on, and as long as there are no further unfounded accusations and acts of harassment against me, I will do my best to continue to work for the citizens on the council who elected me. Perhaps the goal of this nonstop harassment, like this agenda item, is to get me to resign. But those of you who know me know I'm not a quitter. You elected me to be a voice for you and to honestly note my observations in public, which apparently- You elected me to be a voice for you and to honestly note my observations in public, which apparently is so objectionable to some. That the council is attempting to silence me by hiring yet another attorney. I urge the council to vote no on this additional expense. Which further tarnishes the city's reputation. For the good of the city. We must move on. There's any further discussion?
Yeah, uh, I don't, I'm, I'm not into the discussion part, but from what I understand was there was a complaint filed. And it was submitted to the city of, the city of Selma. And in order for it to be unjustified that we are making any claims or anyone. It's in the best interest, uh, for the city of Selma to hire an outside agency to review all claims to make sure. That they are reviewed. Um, and all. Investigative, any claim, um, this has nothing to do with personal feelings, if there was a claim filed. Um, we need to make sure, and, uh, maybe you can, um, add to this. Am I not correct that we have to? Um, double check and, and make sure that these are valid claims that we did investigate.
Yeah, I think, um, the issue ultimately was whether. Uh, there was any allegations that the city attorney was coming from a place of bias and. And evaluating the claims, and so to kind of remedy that situation, uh. At least a majority of the council felt it was best that an outside council evaluate and provide an outside opinion. Um, to either support or oppose the city attorney's opinion on the claim, uh, what, whatever.
That's not what this says, this says, this is not about whether there was bias on the city attorney's part, this is about. A legal services agreement for them to investigate me and my claim, I read this because it's about me. And it didn't have to be, you turned it down, this council decided to make this a public matter. And put this all out in open session and you voted to turn it down and, and, and now you're bringing it back. By hiring an attorney for fifty thousand dollars to come investigate me further. For making a claim, that's harassment and that's further harassment. This has to stop.
And just to be clear that, yeah, you're correct that Hanson Bridget is not, um. If this were to be approved, they are not being hired to evaluate whether I am biased in any way. What they are going to do is provide an independent legal opinion as to whether the complaint submitted had, um. Was valid or had any.
But why, but didn't the council decide that by voting it down? They voted it had no merit by a three-to-one partisan vote, so. I mean. Why, why wouldn't that legal discussion have taken place at the time of the vote? Rather than three months after the fact, this is after the fact, we moved on and now we're bringing it back, we're all bringing it all back up. I, I think we should move on and try to get along and try to work for the citizens instead of bringing all this stuff up again.
Attorney, I have a quick question for you. When this did come about, didn't you make the recommendation? To. Sit down. And have a conversation, we can get this taken care of. Because. I agreed. And I'm gonna tell you why I agree. Because fifty thousand of taxpayer money. Is gonna be, again, just money down the drain. And I'll tell you. This is continuing to keep coming back, you're an attorney. And you gave the recommendation. What I would like to see is that we stop wasting taxpayers' money. On these nonsense. Because we've had in a situation back with Blanca Navarro's situation where fifty thousand of taxpayer money. Was used for attorneys that got thrown out of court. Cause there was no case. Here we go again, another fifty thousand. Of taxpayers' money to get thrown. Down the drain. What I would like to see, I would like to challenge our council. To instead of. Throw money away, we need to utilize this money to the best of our ability for our citizens in doing the right thing. And that means we can do an event to show that we have unity here in our community. And show them that we want to move forward from this nonsense. Because this isn't us, this is just putting a black. Eye in our city. And people see our council meetings, other cities, other constituents, our constituents are seeing this and it's an embarrassment. Not only that. We talked to other cities, other council members, mayors. And they look at this and they're like, what's going on in Selma? What's wrong with you people? This has to stop. And I say, let's remove this item. And let's utilize the public funds to a better. Need for our citizens here in Selma.
So I like, I like to just say that, um. We wouldn't be discussing this if we didn't receive a claim that the mayor wanted to get insurance. For him and his wife. And he wanted to make sure that he would get five thousand dollars if our city manager would look at him. This is a claim that was submitted by them, by the mayor. This is not something that we decided to go and just say, hey, we, we're gonna pick on the mayor. This is, if I understand this correctly, there was a claim submitted to the city of Selma. We rejected it, I think that's first protocol, second, we asked. City attorney, you're being accused of being biased, let's step you a back out of this, let's step all the community. Let's get someone to review the claims that he submitted. Investigate them. And if it comes out that it's wrong, that the claims are wrong or he's right, well then we move forward. So I don't see, and I, and I'm trying to be really, um, sensitive with this because. All I'm saying is that I sit on the council and there was a claim brought to us and it had to do with money. And it also had to do with, uh, requests. And when we went and we discussed this, we're talking about. I believe, I think it's just dotting our i's and crossing our t's by getting someone neutral to review it and give us an opinion. So, I'm not, I'm not saying that he's right, I'm not saying he's wrong, I'm saying that I think it. This, you know, th- this, uh, fifty thousand dollars that they're putting it, I mean, let's go back, it was gonna, I mean. Um, insurance for many years till they're sixty-five comes up to almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars. So, and we're really talking about what's it costing and not to be. And to be, and to be honest, to make sure that we're not doing and we're not being biased. We should all approve this and make sure that an outside independent comes, reviews everything. With an open mind. And comes back and tells us, hey, you know what? This didn't happen, or you know what, maybe this happened. So in my own opinion, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying that there was a claim. There was a claim. And we've, we've been going back and forth and we, when we're right now following protocol and just trying to, to. Complete the process from what I understand, am I correct or am I? Is this, is this the right way to say it?
Yeah, I think that accurately reflects the direction that you guys made and why you wanted to proceed with.
Right, and the act in the direction was to reject my claim, you, you had that chance to investigate this and you turned it down. And you've made it public. And I recused myself, I did the right thing because yes, there was a monetary aspect of the claim, but the reason there was a claim for health insurance. Was because of all this harassment and the effects it's, it had on my health and my mental health, I am not ashamed. To admit that, the rational response to being harassed and getting this kind of treatment. Is not feeling really good. I'm not ashamed to say it. It's not been good. So I made a claim and I threatened legal action against the city that I love and have served for eleven years now. To stop the harassment and the accusations. I've been calling the city attorney every time I see something on closed session, I call the city, is this, is this about me? Is this about me? It creates a sense of paranoia to be going after, to be targeted and victimized like I have been as a member of the past. This past of Selma. And this brings it back, the city council, Mr. Trujillo, you had your chance to investigate it and you turned it down. At that time, this is double jeopardy. No one believes that you're doing this to find out if there was bias on it, you didn't want to find out, you made a cheap political point just like you did. Just now, you, the, the mayor wants half a million dollars and five thousand if the city manager looks at him, that is a cartoon. That is a burlesque of what I, uh, what I asked for, that is a miss, it shows a fundamental misunderstanding. Of the situation in my claim. And I don't deserve that. That was a cheap political point, we need to move on. That's what I'm saying, let's use this fifty thousand dollars to have something like we had on Friday. Something that brings a community together where we can all work together. Not to hire an attorney to go after me to further tarnish my reputation.
Do we have anything from the public? Anybody like to get up and say anything? I'm here.
Uh, Louis Franco, ten sixty-four Mill Street. Um, Mr. Mayor, I just have to say, I don't know how you could actually not recuse yourself on this comment because this does concern you. And I did see a redacted version of your claim. And you did ask for five thousand dollars and you did ask for health insurance for not only you and your wife. And having served on council on the prior. I believe you guys are the employers, not the employee, so I don't understand what this thing is about, uh. Uh, you being harassed. Uh, I, I, I don't understand that, uh, maybe I don't, I don't see what goes on back there, but. From my perspective, I, I don't see that. And then you made a comment. About the city manager has a claim against you, I never heard anything about a claim against you. Um, so. It's just very confusing, I think this is money wise spent so that eliminates all doubt. So if your claims are valid, then you'd be justified. And if your claim's unvalid, we as a community need to know. But I'm still baffled that you're getting up here and making statements. Uh, which in a matter, you should clearly recuse yourself on because this involves you and I think you're just emotionally involved and I just respectfully request that. Perhaps you reconsider and recuse yourself on this vote before you take it. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, just to respond to you because you're going at me personally here and directly. Recusal happens as a result of a financial interest or not because of a topic that concerns a mayor. And you should know that because you're on council.
You, Mr. Mayor, you made a comment. A political bias statement comment before all this began.
And lost.
You did. And nobody's picking on you. Nobody's picking on you, Spat. And, and everybody knows, nobody, nobody's picking on you, nobody's harassing you. So it's all in your mind, if you say it's in your mind, it's in your mind, but.
And you're showing your personal bias, or thank, thank you for your comments, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't agree.
You're more than welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Teresa Salwa, seventeen oh one Dinuba Avenue. Um, I believe it's protocol. That when there is a claim against a city, the council automatically rejects it and then it's investigated at that point. So I think that that is what seems to be happening right here, your claim was rejected and now they are going to investigate it in. In order to resolve it, um, you made the, the statement that you are. Getting along with the council now, that you're trying to be cohesive, but every meeting that I come to. The council is very divided. Unless it's something that doesn't matter. Then the vote is five to, to zero, otherwise you're constantly divided, a three-to-two vote. And. Almost every single meeting, there is hostility, there is name-calling, there's badgering from one person to another, I'm not. Singling out anybody, but there's this back and forth amongst all five of you. And it's, yes, it is a big black eye for the city. And so. If this is going to. Bring some resolution to all that conflict. I'm all for it, I mean, yes, twenty-five, fifty, twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars, but. If it's going to bring the council together at long last and bring us. To be able to have some progress and, and not all this negativity and name-calling and fighting at every single. Meeting, I think it will be money well, well spent if we can. Bring a resolution to all this conflict.
And I appreciate your, your comments again, since you're coming at me, I'm gonna respond. The, the reason they rejected it was not in order to investigate it further, the council rejected my claim with, with. Comments about, um, my request for monetary compensation for health insurance and, and the like. Um, it wasn't to go get another investigation to see if I was really, if I really had something here. This is just something to further bring up. The retaliation against me, that's what it purely is, and the reason they rejected, as you know, because you worked for the city, you ran for mayor a couple of times. You've been in the, you've been in the system, you're on commissions and thank you for your service. But it, they rejected to, so that, you know, you can go and put in a claim against the city with Irma. I never did that, I never followed through with a claim. I just wanted the ri- the harassment to stop and the only way I could do that was. Present a legal threat, unfortunately, that's what it took. You know? It shouldn't have to take that, we should be able to work together and work on that. But that didn't happen and for you to say that this twenty-five to fifty thousand is just going to stop. You know, this, really? It's really gonna stop it to have an attorney come in and go after me because the majority is hiring this attorney, um. How is that going to stop it? It's not, it's going to further it and it's gonna make it worse and it's gonna. It's gonna be a sideshow and it's gonna be something that distracts our city from its purpose, which is to serve the citizens and move forward. That's the key, so. This, that's. That's why this council needs to reject this. And let this go and move on so we can move forward. Any other comments?
Ten fifty-seven Mill Street, Rose Robertson, we all know that we don't need insurance and we don't need five thousand dollars. The whole point of this is. I've never seen three council members in the thirteen years who have such insecurities within themselves. Obviously don't really know what they're doing, they say they're doing things here for the citizens of Selma, however, spending money. After, I mean, just constantly ridiculous amounts of money is beside. Probably a lot of the citizens, however, because you guys got the votes. You know, you're on top of the world, literally, you guys are delusional on a lot of things and you'll see. This is obviously a politi- a political move because you guys just are gonna do anything in your power for when it comes to the elections. The citizens of Selma are not with their ears closed or their eyes closed. You just had two people come up and say spend twenty-five thousand to fifty, these two people were the same people who also ran for the mayor of Selma. One, Louis Franco, who lost twice, used postcards to slander the mayor the first time. And everybody knew that that's his dirty tactics, that's the only way he will constantly, um, work the political, um. That's his political agenda, when Sarah ran again, some same thing with his postcard, ridiculous. So continue to harass us, continue to slander us, continue to do what you're gonna do with the taxpayer money. But let me tell you, we are watching and eventually the citizens of Selma are gonna get together and have to send you guys a message, message, thank you.
Anybody else? We have anybody online or on the phone? Okay, with that, we will bring this matter. Back to council and if there are no further. Um, comments, I will call for a motion for this item.
I make a motion to proof, number eight.
Is, is there a second?
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
No, I just want to clarify. Megan Dodd, you are an attorney. Correct.
Correct.
And you make the re- recommendation that you would have been able to take care of this, correct? By sitting down with the mayor and the city manager.
I, yeah, I, I don't want to comment too much on that because that was in closed session, but I, but I can state that I did attempt that and that did not happen.
Thank you for that.
Okay, continue.
Councilmember Trahill?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to actually just come back and just reiterate before I vote that this claim has been, this action is being because, is being completed because of the fact that we received a claim and the proper protocol for municipal government is to reject the claim and to be unbiased. And because the mayor made an assumption that our city attorney would be biased, we decided to look elsewhere and bring an attorney that would be unbiased and do an actual full review of what's going on. Has nothing to do with individualities, has nothing to do with personalities. We sit on this council to oversight and look at our finances. So when I make a vote, I want you to know that either good or bad, whatever comes out, we do have to dot our i's and cross our t's. So in that way, I say yes to this vote.
Okay. On the last vote, so they've commented, I'll make a quick one. I voted no on to reject a lot of claims for the city. Never have I seen the city retain an independent council for fifty thousand dollars to investigate that claim that the city rejected. It didn't happen. That's bogus. This is being done to harass me further. And it needs to stop and it must stop. I vote no. And with that, this item passes. Okay, item nine on the consent calendar.
If I can just.
Councilmember Kara?
Hold, hold me. I, we didn't vote on number, on item number one. We just passed it. So we'd had a discussion, but no, no one ever made a motion to approve that.
Oh, okay. We'll take a vote on item number one, which is to approve the project list for Senate Bill one.
I make a motion.
Which is for the roads, including, and the city manager. And the deputy city manager said they would look into funding for Fancher, Khan, Osler and Weber Streets with the, which had been neglected for years and years. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consideration of the resolution approving this project.
Is there a second?
Else. It's just to approve this motion, this.
Is there a second? Hold on. No one said that we're going for funding for those other roads. I just brought it up as a point. I realize it will have to come back and the majority will have to vote on it. I get that. The U three will have to approve it. But I made a motion, I brought it up and I made it a point that those people need help out there. But I realize that you're not voting to help them tonight. So I get that.
No, but we did, we're talking in the future for that.
That's an agenda item later.
So we need a second for this.
I'll second it.
All the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, item nine.
Okay. Item nine is when I pulled off. And I'm going to go ahead and we're going to table this for the next meeting, which would be August the seventh. Is that correct? Our August seventh meeting? Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, call the roll, please.
August meeting.
August, the first meeting in August, which is the seventh.
So not the next meeting, but the one after the next meeting.
There's no, there's no July third meeting or first meeting in July.
Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro? Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Item eleven, check register.
And I have a couple of on there. Check number eight one eight three one for the Selma Chamber Conference. It says, I guess it says finance, raisin festival, recycling grant, and it has a G there. What's, where does she, where's this grant coming from?
It's a grant that we received through Cal Recycle for recycling. Yep.
Perfect. Okay. And then on check number eight one eight three four for Chriscom, Admin Sewer Infrastructure forty-five. What, what was that for? What report or?
So that is our monthly fee for our government advocate, Chriscom. And so for every month that they send us an invoice, they specify what specifically they're advocating on behalf of us for. And over the last few months, it's been sewer infrastructure. But it's the same fee every month.
Okay.
For their agreement, for the agreement the council approved. So, and just to expand on that further, it's, you know, requests that we've made to our elected officials. So our state senators, our congressman Jim Costa.
Okay. By any chance, city manager, can we get them out to give us just an update as to if they're going out for some, you know, grants or funding for the infrastructure? I'd like to see what's out there because I know we talk, you know, I, Jim Costa recently mentioned that there's could be some funding. So I'd like to see, you know, kind of what work they're doing so that we can emphasize, you know, go out there and get those grants for us. We need it. Okay. And then check number eight one eight four six and it says, Lana Bringham, and it says pictures of this embroidery and it says summer shirts. Is that five thousand five hundred and five ninety-one cents? What was that for?
It's public works uniforms that are specific to the summer short sleeve. Normally they wear long sleeve shirts and they're embroidered with the city of Selma logo.
Perfect. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Anybody else with any items on the check register? Anybody from the public?
Come, Mr. Mayor, can I just, I think, you know, it's, it'll be a good time for Chriscom to come because they have the actual, the, the, the request from the state. That'd be, that would be a really good request. That'd be really good for them to come in.
At the July meeting or August meeting?
August would be good because they have the, they already went through the July budget.
I will reach out to Chriscom.
Anybody from the public with any concerns about the check register? Okay, is there a motion to pass item eleven?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Our first item is a public hearing item. It's a consideration of resolution adopting the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four City of Selma fiscal year budget. Before we open up the public hearing to the public, we will ask if there are any comments or clarifying comments from the city council at this time on the budget. If not, we will open up the public hearing to the public. Does the public have any comments? Before we refer the matter back to the city manager? Comments? If anybody online or on the phone? That we will close the public hearing at this time and will refer the matter back to council city manager. Did you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. What you have in front of you is the final proposed draft following the budget workshop on Friday afternoon. The only change that we've made, you know, besides adding narratives and, and information about each department, is that we added the fifty thousand dollars to the economic development budget. And we created a separate line item called Business Improvement District, as was requested by the city council by consensus on last Friday. Everything else in terms of the, the budget, the general fund budget and all the other enterprise funds are, remain the same.
Thank you. Any council members have comments at this time?
Just because this came back to me, I just want to reassure, reassure ourselves that the BID and the we discussed is on there. It is on, okay, okay. That's what, that's my most important.
I have a quick, yeah, just make a comment as to that as well. Can we bring back on the the arts council? Because I know councilmember Trahilla brought up a good point in regards to some of the events that we have there. I didn't realize that some of, or the event that didn't involve Selma children involved other children from other cities.
As far as like, like a cool kids performance, we do get performers from all over the, I mean, from all over the valley. That's not just in cool kids. That's also in any of our shows. I mean, the great thing about the Selma Arts Center is, is it is a premier venue. So we do get people from all over that participate in those programs. But there is no program that is just for kids outside of Selma. The majority of the cool kids are, are here locally.
Okay.
Okay, so, so let me just reiterate, since we're talking about the budget and we're talking about the arts council. But we were actually talking about, when we're talking about the budget was, we wanted to make sure that the arts council and the arts center understands that we would like to prioritize our children, our schools and our community events to be looked and plugged into that arts council more aggressively.
Yes, absolutely. One hundred percent.
Thank you.
And, and just to expand on that, we will, we are planning on coming back with additional study sessions to look at what that's going to look like for the community engagement.
I, I have a comment. Did you have one, Mendoza?
No.
Councilmember? I would like to thank all the city employees for their work on the city's budget this year. This has definitely been an onion with the first look at the budget, a superficial outer layer, followed by more layers of detail with the draft budget meeting last Friday at four o'clock. I would like to point out to the citizens that the budgeted expenditures of fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two were initially sixteen million, ten thousand and four hundred thirty dollars, which in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year have ballooned to twenty-two million, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars. The city is spending too much money too fast. Here's the problem. The city already borrowed fourteen million dollars in order to pay down the city's pension liability. As we saw at the previous council meetings, the city is looking at fronting the cost of installing sewer lines for at least two developers with a price tag of potentially over twenty million dollars, which the city doesn't have and will need to borrow. Even though, as you learn during the agenda items, the city doesn't have a lien on the homes of the developers, which the sewer lines are servicing. The loan to put the sewer lines puts up city property such as the new police station, Pioneer Village and the art center as collateral in case the city defaults. What happens to the developers if they don't put in their homes or just don't decide to reimburse the city for the work on their behalf? Not a heck of a lot. And let's face it, the developers have been looking for just this kind of sweetheart deal for years, just waiting for a council majority who had voted in. And just tonight, we've seen what we've seen. Where will the money for the strokes on all these loans come from if the economy goes south? That's the problem with too much debt. Payments have to be made no matter whether the sales and property tax payments are being made by the citizens. I thank the city for this budget, but I wanted to voice my concerns to the people so they know what's going on with their city's finances. And with that, I'll ask for either more comments or I'll ask for a motion on the consideration of the resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four City of Selma fiscal year budget.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho? Councilmember Gara?
No.
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
No. Okay, budget passes. Move on to item, the first item of regular business, consideration of professional services agreements with Yamabi and Horn Engineering, Inc., QK, Inc. and Four Creeks for various contract city engineering services.
Evening, council. Before you, the individual contracts for three qualified engineering firms. I had comprehensive catalog of services to the city of Selma. Currently, Yamabi and Horn sits as the contract city engineer for the city of Selma and that would continue. However, thank you. However, as part of the RFP, I think there were other items included and staff decided in order to maximize the ability to get things moving in a, in a expeditious fashion, that contracting with multiple firms was, was the best, best move for the city. And so a contract with QK, formerly Quadnoff Engineering, would be doing various master plans for the city such as storm drain, participating in parks master planning and looking at some of the other infrastructure plans to expedite development as well as allow the city to maybe pursue funding opportunities to enhance those services to citizens. With Four Creeks, they would be doing a development review. So that would be their specialty so that it would be a specific engineer dedicated to doing that service that could be repeated. And consistency is always the key with those type of items. So we would, with the oversight of David Horn as the city engineer, Four Creeks would be coordinating those reviews and be doing those as they are submitted, as well as the permit fees would be paying for a majority of those services as well. So with that, staff's available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your report. Does council have any questions? We're deputy city manager Keen?
I just have a comment. You said the key word consistency. That's what I'm hearing that the developers are wanting is a consistency. And, you know, to be honest, I, we just passed a budget and, you know, yes, there's, you know, it's scary, you know, because we're spending money. But what I see is I see all these little orange signs all through, all through town as I'm coming into town. So that to me is construction. That to me is growth. That to me is we're moving, you know, so to me, I, I like to see orange. So, because we're moving, you know. But yeah, you said the key word consistency. So thank you so much for that.
Any other comments?
I'd like to say a couple of comments. In regards to the three agencies, when this concept came up, I, you know, I had some concerns. But, you know, it, it, it all falls back to, you know, you can invest in your community. But if you don't have the, the team, the, 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 the staff to make sure that you push it along, you're going to get, you're going to get bogged down. So when I started having the discussion, our city manager of his concept, because this is our city manager's thought process of who he hires, who brings his team and how they're going to navigate. But what they're going to navigate, if you, if you look at what's going on is when you start talking about infrastructure, you know, the, the development of infrastructure, sewer lines, that, that's an expense. But I don't look at it as an expense. I look at it as investment. That means to me it equifies, it equifies sixteen hundred homes. It, 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 it means our housing element was off. So what do we do? We bring low housing, we bring senior homie and we, we attach it right by Walmart. What does that mean? It's more, more expanding. Don't look at the budget that in two thousand twenty-one was sixty million dollars. Look at the budget that is actually twenty-one million. That means that we're increasing our sales tax. That means that we're increasing and we're ma, and we're moving and we're moving. So rather than look at the risk, look at the investment and look and stop and actually think and say to yourself, where were we at in two thousand ten? No housing. Where were we at in two thousand twenty-one? No housing. So there has to be a balance of a risk and investment, but also in front of that, you have to put key players and key people in positions to make qualified decisions so we can get double, triple the amount of an investment. So what the manager's telling me and what I see here is he says, I'm going to put this engineer to be in charge of this. I'm going to put this engineer in charge of this and I'm going to have this individual. And, and if we go back and look at the averages of the last three years of what do we expense, what we have spent in engineering to what we're going to spend now, I actually think we're going to have some savings. So when we start talking about this and I really give, I give the, I give the kudos to our city manager, but along his staff, because that's a team that's coming. When we had the foresight of saying, hey, we're going to start doing some investments. Before we do the investments, we have to bring the team and it has to cost. And it started by us doing a wage analysis to make sure our employees are going to get paid proper. Because if they get paid proper, we all know that they're going to be able to be successful. I'm not saying that, you know, anybody's right or wrong. I'm just giving you my opinion as to an overlay of what the future is. And you know what? At the end of the day, I'm an elected official and I'm a visionary. And I vision and I see Selma to do this, but it costs. And it takes us to make sure to explain that vision and believe in it. So by doing those three, bringing these three engineers and giving his plan, he's telling me, hey, John, I'm going to put this person here, he's going to be in. put this person here, he's gonna be in charge of this, I'm gonna put this person here. If it doesn't work, he's gotta do the decision. But for right now, I applaud you for doing what you're doing. It's a plan, something that we haven't had in the past. So for that, I just, I, but, but there's a bigger picture here. I know we say things and we look at things, but you guys gotta look at what we're doing. There's so much in, infrastructure going on everywhere. And there's a lot of more development coming, so for that, I thank you guys and I really appreciate what you're doing.
Okay, I have a quick question for you. I just wanted to admit, okay, so we're dealing with three different um engineer firms. And they're all gonna be specializing on, on special projects or they specialize in cer, certain um task. So will they collaborate together? Because we don't want to fall back on the same issues that we've had in the past. Because for many years, we've always said, well, so and so, he's never there, or she's never there. I ca, I haven't heard from her for twenty we, or, you know, three weeks, four weeks. This is what we heard from developers that stood right there and mentioned this. So my question to you is, are they going to collaborate? At least know what each one is doing? Because if, say, Mr. So-and-so developer calls and says, well, I was working with Mr. Horn, but now I gotta go to Cindy Kay. Um, and I talked to Cindy Kay, but she doesn't know anything that Mr. Horn's meant. That's what we want to get away from. That's not what we want to hear.
So uh David Horn will maintain title as city engineer, so he will be primary contact for all developers as well as myself. All the developers have my phone number, it's attached to my email, they can reach me whenever they want, they know where to find me, and I return phone calls. As far as coordination, David will maintain the title of singe, city engineer for uh coordination and policy purposes, because he's been in the meetings, he understands what the city is looking to do. He's here tonight, listening to all these discussions. So he will be overseeing and coordinating with QK as they develop the master plans for, you know, uh s, uh storm drainage and solid waste and, and broadband access in parks. He understands what issues Public Works has been having with maintenance of storm drain basins and how that needs to be incorporated into the storm drain master plan. As far as development review, he understands some of the discussions that have been going on with developers in terms of comments and understanding. We had a meeting on Thursday with a developer where we sat down for two hours and went through page by page with their plan. Uh, over every comment that they received. The type of service that we're providing is needed because it's been neglected, and David understands that. He will also be communicating that with the subsequent engineers that we'll be coordinating with so that there is a comprehensive view of how development is done in Selma.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Anybody from the public have anything to say?
Appreciate the opportunity. Part of the interns. The process that was put out. Uh, we and uh all of the services. Firm was ready to do all like the interview process and allow us to be the city. Projects done, the healthiest with QK. Staff at those points. City engineer.
Talk louder. Uh, I look forward to, to having the title of city engineer, and I, I take that as a, a stance of responsibility. And uh, I, I, I will commit to you to do my best to collaborate with those firms, to be consistent. We, there's a lot of technology that's being associated here at the city that is going to make that easy. Um, so our, our team at Y and H is ready to be, do our part and to work with those other firms. My job is going to be to communicate with them to make sure they have their projects moving forward. Um, this structure is not a new, you know, they didn't invent this structure. A lot of cities will hire plan check firms. Our firm is a plan check firm for other cities, City of Madera. That's all we do, it's just plan check. They send us the plans, we plan check, we send it back to their city engineer. This is a common process, and I think it'll work well for the City of Selma. The master plans, the, the work that QK will be working on, that's just like hiring a, a consultant to do that specific project. So they can be doing that while my team is doing all the other parts of the city engineering. So anyway, that's all I'll say. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And if I can add to that as a recovering consultant that I once did previously, um, I, 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 I'd like to commend David for pointing out a key point. He's not just one person, he's, he's a person with people behind him. And part of the strategy and part of the structure of organizing these contracts is to leverage the strengths of each firm without bogging one down. David makes a great point. He has forty six employees, but they're working for other clients, they're working for other cities. By David being here, he's able to focus on our items while he's able to leverage resources at QK, which has a hundred and thirty plus employees, uh ranging from engineers, biologists, surveyors, what have you. Everybody at Four Creeks, which is seventy. There are another firm with a lot of consultants. But the point is resources, getting things done, being able to push these things through that the council has the foresight to um allow staff to move with master planning infrastructure so that it's easier for development to occur. You know, plan check in a timely fashion, in a coordinated fashion. That's the key to this structure of having three engineering firms uh that specialize in various areas of engineering.
Any other comments from the council? Do we have a motion for this item tonight?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Potemcho?
Yes.
Councilmember Gera?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Item fourteen, consideration of a resolution approving the City Council Handbook of Rules and Procedures. Or please.
Yes, so this item, um, if you guys recall, was a council-directed item. Um, you guys have seen the handbook once before, you guys had comments um yourself on revisions to make, which I did make. And then um as well as staff internally have been reviewing it for the last, you know, month or so and, and providing their own comments just based on, you know, their understanding of how the, how the city works um as well. So all of those changes have been incorporated. Um, if you guys have additional changes, uh we can still make those and bring it back at a later date. But if you guys don't have any major changes tonight and wish to adopt it, we can do that as well. And I'm available for any questions.
Thanks for your report, City Attorney Dodd. Um, does Council have any questions for the City Attorney at this time, or any comments?
I do, um, City Attorney. I have a concern in regards to um the page two thirty nine where it states that any requests for future agenda items are not approved by the majority of the ca, city council will not be considered. My concern is, we all represent a different district, we have our own district. So if a person in my district, District Three, has an issue or concern that will, they would like to put on the agenda, and I request it, and it doesn't get approved by the majority, then what you're telling me is that my district will not have fair representation. And that's the reason why we went district in the first place. So that every person in our city would have a voice and fair representation. So I would like that to be removed because it's not fair for the majority, because we see how votes go, that my district and another district will not have a voice or a concern, or will never be able to have anything put on the agenda. And that's not right. And I think, honestly, I think it's illegal.
So just to respond to that, um, I mean, I understand your concern, but I will tell you that um, I don't think that there's a city that I've been in that doesn't operate in that way. Um, technically, it's the council should not be acting on anything without a majority of council approving, because couns, that's the only way that council can act. No individual council member can act on their own, um regardless of whether they represent a district or not. Um, so this is not a unique practice that would be coming to Selma. Um, I, a good example I could give you, um, in, in Tulare, they specifically have to, the council members have to fill out a form um before they bring items, before they, uh, and it's presented on the agenda. That specific form will be attached to the agenda packet with that council member's request for the agenda item, and all the council will vote. And if the couns, if they don't get a majority consensus, then that item is not heard on, on the agenda. So um, I mean, you guys can do whatever you want as council as far as revising this, but I will say that it, this is not a unique provision to Selma if it were to be adopted, and it, it's not illegal.
Okay, well, in Tulare, if I'm correct, I believe they have seven council members, is that correct? No?
No, they have five.
They have five.
And they are districts as well.
They are?
Yes.
But they're a much larger city than Selma.
Yeah, they're, they're a little larger.
I mean, I just don't feel that that's something that even should be in the handbook, because like I'm saying, every individual in our city should be represented. And that's exactly what it's saying now, if that is a fair practice, maybe that's, I don't believe that that is a fair practice, because that's the reason why they went district, because they wanted fair representation in every, where there's the west, the west side, the east side, south side, north side, what have you. Um, so I, I believe that that is a problem. It shouldn't be that way, it's never been that way. If a council member requests to put something on the agenda because that's what a, a individual has mentioned, or say they're having problems there, a crying, something going on, there shouldn't have been, there's never been an issue. We just contact city clerk like we have in the past. Now everything has to be a vote, which will be a three true vote, because they're not gonna want to put anything on the agenda if it's my district. And that's wrong, it's completely wrong in all levels. And for that, I won't approve this agenda, I won't approve this.
Any other comments?
Yep, I, well, I want to make sure that we, we clarify that, you know, I've always stated this, that not one individual council member makes decisions, and what we should always be thinking is that this, this council should always just make a decision on the dais. And not one individual should be talking to the city attorney or the city manager, because at the end of the day, the vote from the dais is the direction to the city council, to the city mayor, I mean, to the city manager and to the city attorney. So being said that, what's the difference in coming, bringing it back? And I, you know, I would even entertain that if you want to fill that form out, include it on there, that would be great, that would be something great. You know, but I don't, but I don't think changing it would make any difference. I mean, if other people want to do that, that's fine, but I, for me, myself, I don't, I don't have no, I don't have no ill feeling for any of us, because we all represent our community. And it would be, it would, it would be looked upon in open session if an individual's gonna go against that. So I don't see it, I don't see it a problem, but I also want to make sure that we reiterate the fact that every council member should not be talking about issues out of the dais and should be just talking about it in the dais. That is, that, that's, that's a number one, number one rule. We should be making decisions in the dais, not anywhere else. So, but in this part, um, I don't see any, I don't see any, I don't see any practice where we're just ven, we have a vengeance of saying, we're gonna do something, and we're gonna shoot anybody down because it's just not a majority or this and that. It's a betterment of our community, it's gonna be the betterment of our community. So for that, and this, th, this handbook is brought upon us because we want to make sure that we can have a professional, professional discussion being, being followed by professional discussion, and that's why this handbook's being brought in. Has nothing to do with anything else, so for that, I, I don't, I don't, I, I don't see nothing wrong, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with this handbook.
Any other council members with a comment at this time? Mayor Potemcho? No? Okay, I do. Um, you already went, you mind if I go? Okay, no, go ahead, council member. Please.
I have, um, I do have some um revisions that need to be made here. And so in page one for B, council elections, it says that um the council consists of four members that are elected by districts and a mayor which is appointed, it's actually, he's elected. And then um for page two, under city clerk, second paragraph, everywhere else throughout the, the um handbook, it talks about government code, so we just need to cite that for the government code. So it's city. Section that, the first one, yeah, it'll be one. Yeah. Left in. And then for F, the second paragraph, government code, just cite the code. Page um three, under city attorney, I'm not sure if it's a typo, second paragraph, first sentence, there's an underscore. Um, page four, it would be under mayor as presiding officer and duties there. Two, I just want clarification for the last paragraph that talks about um, the mayor may announce special rules for the consideration of particular agenda, I'm sorry, particular item on the agenda, such as but not limited to, and then it says the length, length of time persons may speak. So is that talking about the public may speak, or is that talking about the um council members that are speaking?
It's meant to address members of the public that would speak, so if, if uh time needs to be increased,
Okay.
anything along those lines, or if there is a large audience here for one item and uh it actually needs to be reduced in time or something.
Perfect, okay. Um, and then the um there's a, a clause here, and I'm just saying this as a general, because, you know, who knows? Maybe in a couple of years I'll run for, or maybe this year I'll run for mayor, who knows? But it's, uh, says the mayor shall in all instances have the last chance to speak, so can we strike that out? And it just goes for, like I said, general. So it's right, um, one, two, three, the fourth line up from the second paragraph. This is the mayor.
What pages is that?
This is four, page four.
Or?
Well, I'm looking at the actual handbook, so it's two twenty eight.
What paragraph is? What paragraph is that?
The, the second paragraph, um, right before Mayor Protem.
And what, what did you wanna change on that?
I wanted to strike out, the mayor shall in all instances have the last chance to speak.
Oh. Did you wanna change your ordinance too? Because it comes from the ordinance.
Well, if it comes from the ordinance, then that's fine. Then we need to cite it that it comes from the ordinance. If it comes from the ordinance, then we just cite it. Um, that's not, not there. And so on page seven, which is page two thirty-one of the packet, under regular meetings, the, um, second paragraph is a re- repeat of, it's already stated up on the first paragraph. Whenever the first, whenever the day fixed for a regular meeting for council falls upon a day designated as a holiday, such as meeting maybe held at the same hour on the next succeeding day. So that language is pretty much spoken in the first paragraph. We're sorry. Um, number ten, we're going, um, I'm sorry, page ten, under N, agenda format, we're going just to one communication, right?
That's how I have it currently in here. Uh, that's up to you guys though.
And then, um, sorry, I had to go through this, um. Nope, that's fine. Oh, wait, I think I do have something on page thirteen, sure. Um, oh yeah, so, um, page thirteen, under addressing the city council and item two, one speaker at a time. So there's this, uh, a part there that talks about, um, the last sentence in that paragraph. Further, all council members shall refrain from any side conversations during the meeting. Is there, um, there's, well, what I saw throughout here too is that there was no consequences. So I don't know if the, um, the other, um, what is it called? The other form that we have, the, um, what is it called?
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct, sorry, thank you. The Code of Conduct, if that addresses that behavior, um, it doesn't state any consequences of what happens because there is side conversations.
I believe there, yeah, we can, we can add specific consequences for that. I do believe, because that's something that me and, uh, city manager discussed, that there is a section that talks about, um, consequences for not following, um, certain decorum in this that we added. But I, I can't remember which section that was in, uh, but I, we can.
No, it's not removable. It's, um.
But we can specifically put in, um, if that's what the council wishes, we can specifically put in something that addresses what happens when there's side conversations, if that's what the council wishes.
Yeah, page thirteen, second paragraph. I'm sorry, number two, full in number two. And then number fifteen, I'm sorry, page fifteen, um, it's just a typo, items presented under.
Page eighteen, council member.
Page fifteen?
Page eighteen, failure of council members to abide by the above can result in censure, removal from the meeting as well as any other consequences that are deemed appropriate by a majority of the council.
Okay, thank you.
I guess that would include arrest? Could you have somebody arrested on the city council if they, if they had a side conversation? Or just.
Not a crime.
Maybe just told to leave or put in handcuffs and let out or.
It's not a crime.
All right. But it says anything. I mean, anything the majority decides.
By that, if it's a crime.
And I noticed that is. Sorry, my mic's not on. I noticed that as well on fifteen, the, I think that was a formatting issue that happened when we did the clean version.
Okay.
So, um, I will fix that formatting issue on this page fifteen.
And I think I just have one more thing. Yeah, uh, page twenty, about food or drink other than bottled water. So if we could just post a sign maybe, or say po- as posted. And I think that was it.
Um, I have some comments. Is everybody okay if I make some comments now? Um, is everybody done? Mayor Protem, did you wanna say?
Okay, um, I would just mention that this is the third employee handbook paid for by the city council since two thousand seventeen. This, the changes in this employee handbook represents the city's further dissent. In the past, there have been many different council majorities. The one element that shined through was an individual council member could get an item on the agenda, whether or not the majority agreed with it. The outcome of the vote was predictable, but the important part was that it was considered and voted on by council in open session with the citizens being able to listen in and offer their input. With this new rule, only agenda items approved by the majority, considered in a meeting to go on the agenda approved will actually be considered. Another element that is anti-democratic is a silent vote is considered to be a yes vote. That's ridiculous. A council member should indicate yes or no, or silence should be an abstention. And how about parliamentary procedures? We all remember Council Member Mendoza Navarro stating that the Roberts Rules of Order should be observed during council meetings. And yet at the last meeting, after the vote had been taken and the agenda item completed, Council Member Trujillo wanted to talk some more about it and received the council majority's vote to do so. So really what's happening is these three council members wanna be able to make rules for the council members, which they themselves do not follow. This is the arrogance of power and people are watching, whether you know it or not. What's too bad is local people watch all these meetings and they see what's happening here and they're gonna pass. They're not gonna run for office, unfortunately. Because, you know, they see that they can't make a difference. One person gets on, not in the majority, what's the point? People ask me why, when I said this job was taking a toll on my mental health, I said, it's a rational response to this, this council. Um, unfortunately, in government, people deserve a chance to discuss their issues and agenda items. Just like people deserve a chance to discuss issues. Government should reflect that. And this handbook, it's, I guess, appropriate or interesting or it makes sense that these three are coming up with another, another form of control of speech and conduct on the council that puts the majority in further power, right? Everybody sees that, right? These three are making further rules to make the majority more powerful and to stifle debate and any kind of dissent. That's what this is doing and I won't support it.
Do we have any comments from the public at this time on the? Let me get the title right. The City Council Handbook of Rules and Procedures. We have anybody online or on the phone? Okay. Oh, we have someone who'd like to say something.
Ten fifty-seven Mill Street, Earl Robertson. You could violate our free, um, First Amendment right of speech, um, with dark taxpayer money. But at the end of the day, we will be getting the word out. Thank you.
That will, uh, bring the matter back to the council. Is there a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve it with the, um, corrections that I, I stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Council Member Mendoza Navarro.
Yes.
Council Member Trujillo.
Yes.
Council Member Garrett.
No.
Mayor Protem Cho.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
No. Um, we've been at this for a while. Is everybody good with a five-minute break at this point? Okay, we'll, uh, take a break, come back.
All right, we're back in session. We'll move on to item fifteen now, consideration of appointments to various city commissions. Report please.
Mayor and members of the council, what you have before you today is the consideration of appointments to various city commissions. As we are all aware, the city has five commissions to which the council has the jurisdiction to appoint. Some are all of the members of the commission. Each commission has an issue, a policy and or program focus. The council, as everyone knows, relies on these groups to advise them on a wide range of issues affecting the city. So what this council has before you is attachment A, a list of the commissioners' positions with terms that are set to expire at the end of this month. On the left of page two hundred and fifty-two highlighted are the list of the names of the commissioners, either that have a vacancy or the incumbents that have reapplied. And on the right are the new applications on file. For instance, for the planning commission, we did have a commissioner that submitted his resignation at the end of his term or right before the end of his term. We have another commissioner that submitted, reapplied. We also have two new applications on file. All of the applicants and the incumbents were advised of today's meeting. Now I see some of them today. Thank you all for coming and we just council and city staff really want to thank you for all of the time that you spend assisting and providing the information before us.
Thank you for that report. So we'll start with the planning commission. I guess we'll just go with, in the past council, we reapplied those reappointed, those who wanted to be on the commissions. Are we doing that again tonight, reappointing? And then, and then putting it up to a vote for the vacancy, if that works, okay? In that case, the planning commission, Ramza Curry would be, as a current commissioner, she would be reappointed. And then there would be two applications on file for the one vacancy. Is there a motion for a particular commissioner to be voted on?
I'll make a motion to appoint Narimje Josan to the planning commission.
Okay, I'll second that. Could we call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gara.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
No.
Councilmember Trujillo. Mayor Protimcho.
No.
Okay, motion fails. The next application considers there a motion for Louis Franco to be nominated.
Make a motion for Louis Franco to be nominated?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Yes.
Mayor Protimcho.
Yes.
Councilmember Gara.
No.
Councilmember Trujillo. Mayor Robertson.
No. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Franco. Thank you for your service and congratulations Commissioner Ramza Curry for your reappointment. With that, we'll move on to the recreation and community services. There are two vacancies and two people applying. Are we good with just appointing those two? Great. We'll move on to the personnel commission. We have no vacancies and we have both commissioners reapplying, so there's no vote there. Pioneer Village Commission, we have two vacancies and no one applying. And the Measure S Oversight Committee, we have one vacancy and one person, Mr. Doug Kessler, applying for that. Would council good with appointing Mr. Kessler? Congratulations and thank you for your service. And with that.
Let's have a quick question for these vacancies. If someone would like to apply, can they just submit an application?
They can apply at any time.
At any time, right? I mean, why do we want to have these vacancies? It's too bad. Can we offer Mr. Josan? Is he here today?
He is not here today.
Okay. Maybe we can, he has a really intense, I mean, his resume was, was amazing. I'd like to see if maybe he'd like to be on the Pioneer Village. I mean, we just have the same people and the same, we'd like to get some diversity. I think diversity is good for our community.
We can reach out to Mr. Josan as well as for the bid committee of, well, they have to be part of downtown. I don't think he owns a downtown business, but we'll, we'll follow up with him about that. Yeah, yeah, all the re applicants, that's the way we've done it.
So I have a question really quick.
Sorry, I just would like to ask a question about that. Ramza Corey, nineteen twenty-seven High Street. Just because there is a vacancy on the downtown business district and I do have a business in downtown. Is it a conflict of interest if I'm serving on another committee to also apply to help at a vacancy, at least for the time being until some other people are interested, I'm willing to help.
No. She said the only thing from my understanding is even us as council members, we can apply if we wanted to. The only thing is that things come back to us is for approval. And she said that could be a conflict of interest because we have a business downtown. So that's, it was nothing in the bylaws. I read the whole thing and she clarified that, so.
Yeah, but, but that's a bid and we're talking about, we're talking about, we're in the city council meeting, talking about this organizational. If she would like to, we could actually have our city manager contact the BID, follow through and let them talk because right now it's not agendaized and when we're talking about a, we're talking about a, another agency that doesn't pertain to our, right now it's not an.
I know, but.
Yeah, no, I wasn't asking about the rule. I just was asking about the rule if it is okay for an existing commissioner to serve on another.
Can. You can.
Irrelevant.
So if it's not an issue, yes, of course, I'll reach out to city manager or city clerk or whoever.
Well, we can reach out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curry.
So I have a really quick question in regards to this. For the, for the people that are the participants that participate, do they get some kind of certificate telling them, thank you for their service and do we as, as an outreach, you know, along with council and Gara? I mean, do we publicize that, you know what, hey, our agencies are missing, we, we have two vacancies? That, you know, do we, I mean, we're proactive, this is what we want to do, do, are we doing that or?
Great question, thank you. If I may, we are posting on social media, we post in the newspaper, we post. I make a recommendation to the city liaisons, reminding them of the vacancies. We have conversations about doing what we call a shoulder tap. You know, we can post all this information, but I know every time that I have volunteered on different boards because I've been personally asked. And I think that's, I, part of it is when we are personally asked and said, you know what, you bring great comments, these are great items that you bring up. If you would like to, I think you would be a great fit for that. And I see Councilmember Trujillo smiling because I think that's how he became part of the council. I think that's how he's asked other people about participating because I feel that's one of the most, you know, it, it just, it makes you want to volunteer. As we all are aware, most of this is, you know, the commissions are all on volunteer basis. So it's time away from family, time away from our home, time away from work that we want to spend to better our community, to assist with everyone.
So, so I want to, I want to piggyback on what she just stated. Back in two thousand, two thousand one, Mike Dur and Dr. Louis came and knocked on my door because I was married to Kelly and they knew her. And Mike Dur said, hey, you want to join the streets and parks or the streets and sign, stop sign committee? And I looked at him and I said, what the heck? And they knocked on my door and they told me and I said, well, yeah, Kelly said, that's our doctor, you gotta see us. I said, okay, come on Thursday. So I went to a meeting, what do we do? We just talk about stop signs or something. And that's a true statement. That's what Mike Dur and Dr. Louis did to me when they came in and knocked on the door and told me, that's how I got involved. So I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm just trying to let everybody know because sometimes we look at this, we don't have, we have vacancies. It's not because the city's doing outreach, it's because there's some residents that it does take that tap in the shoulder, it does take that knocking on the door saying, hey, you know what, you'd be a good fit because I never thought that. I went from, I went from stop sign committee to my, well, Scott knows this, I went to from stop sign committee to Personnel Commission to Planning Commission and, you know, that's where it started. And so I just think that, I, I do think that you said it, you said it best. Tapping on somebody's shoulder and saying, hey, wouldn't you like to help us clean or get the community going and stuff? So, but I really would like for us to think about giving people that do put some time into the community. We all have differences, but at the end of the day, when they put their time in, we should think about giving them a certificate, maybe bringing them here, thanking them, telling them, thank you for your service because you did, you are part of our team.
Great point. If the council's okay with it, we can reach out to those who have let their appointments expire and bring it back for a future council meeting for recognition. Just as a personal note, I know I started, I took the, the chamber, the chamber had the leadership Selma class and you would take a year long, every month you would take a class about Selma and you'd learn, you know, you, one of them was a council meeting, one of them was walking around the city, you just learn about what goes on with the city. And that was good training for it. We don't have that anymore. I hope we can do that again someday. Wasn't it good? It was a good class. It teaches you about the work. Yeah, everybody takes that. Yeah, it's a good thing. Everybody should take that. All right, who has time? I mean, I know people don't have time, they have to work sometimes, so I get that, but if we could, well, now we have online. When Rose and I took it in eleven and twelve, I mean, it was, there was no online. Now maybe there might be an online component, so anyway. All right, with that, we'll move on to item sixteen, which is a discussion regarding appointments of panelists for Integrated Waste Management Services Selection Committee. Thank you, mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, the city currently has a request for proposals out for waste hauling services. And as part of that process of selecting a waste hauler for the next up to ten years after twenty twenty-four, part of the process is going to involve having a panel of community members and what staff is proposing is a seven panel, or seven member panel with five representatives appointed by each individual council member and then two at-large members. I know there's at least one member of the community who's, who has expressed interest in being on that panel. And you don't have to give me your recommendation for appointment today, but if you can send them over within the, by the end of the week, we can start reaching out to those individuals and, and find out if they would be open to serving on that panel. But if you do have somebody in mind right now, we'd be happy to take them down, take those names down. Council, have any comments or questions?
Yeah, city manager, I do. I have a few questions. First of all, who do we recommend? Does, you want it to be a city summer residence?
Good question. Yeah, it should be a summer resident who has experience with our existing trash service, preferably summer resident. Okay. Are we going to get something in writing regarding the rules of serving or the applications? Like, is there a specific application for this? For the appointments, no, but for the, for the at-large members, we will have an application, very brief application and we'll verify their address and residence status. Where they live is what I mean.
Sorry, if they live outside of the city, but they're within the school district, is that considered at large? Or would that, doesn't matter if there's, I guess, citizen of Selma? Because they're technically a citizen, but they just happen to live on the outskirts of.
It would, it would be somebody who would be served by the city's waste hauler.
Okay, served by the city's waste hauler, okay, perfect.
So going back to the golden oldie, this council meeting seems like twelve hundred years ago, but when I was talking about Osler and Fancher and those roads, they're serviced, I think, by waste management, is that right? And Cal Water? Cal Water, yes, I'm not quite sure. Waste management too? I don't think so. I think that's, is it? They are? Fancher, Osler.
Con.
No, that's Republic. The county has a different hauler, not, I don't know if it's. So they would not be eligible for this? Correct. Got it. Thank you. Okay, it's.
This is the timeframe here. You need it before the twenty-eighth of June or by the twenty-eighth?
By the end of this week, so we can start reaching out, find out availability based on this timeline. We'll have the orientation with them by the twenty-eighth. What kind of time commitment would this entail? It likely would be no more than a two-hour time commitment. Aside from the orientation, the orientation will likely take thirty minutes to an hour, so a total you're looking at about three hours. Three hours. Community, have any questions at this point? Do we have anybody online or on the phone? Okay, bring it back. Do you need a vote on this? Is this a voting system or is this just discussion? Just discussion, but I will be receiving hopefully recommendations for appointment from each council member. And I apologize, I miscalculated that time commitment. So it's one hour per interview with each panelist or with each applicant. We don't know exact, I think we'll have at least three based on the pre-proposer conference. So you're probably looking at a minimum of at least four hours. And that'll be communicated to them when you, when you talk to them? Correct. That we will move on to departmental reports. City manager? Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the council. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff. This, they worked extremely hard through this budget process. We were extremely short-staffed for pretty much most of it. But especially our finance department, Jacob and Andrea, our senior accountant and the accountant were here earlier, but they worked very hard with the short-staffed department to, to make sure that the council received all the information that was necessary. So kudos to them, but also kudos to the department heads who worked really hard to identify their needs early on and to make sure those were communicated. And then also, as you can tell by the number of items on the agenda packet, they also had to juggle all those other things as well besides the budget. So they've been working really hard and I just want to make sure that they get the recognition that they deserve. So thank you. And I believe I think the city engineer had a, had another comment, but do you want to go, do you want to mention it now? Go ahead, Mr. City Engineer.
The microphone is on. I just wanted to respond to one of the last council meetings. The issue of the pavement was brought up on Floral Avenue near Thompson. The issue was the pavement was uneven and not good. And the city manager had mentioned at the meeting that it was most likely a temporary pavement patch, and that was true. Our staff called their contractor the next day, talked to them about the issue. It was a temporary pavement for the work that PG&E had done at the intersection. Since that council meeting and as of tonight at about four thirty, they finished the permanent paving of that intersection. So when we asked them to do a better job with temporary paving, they said, you know what, we're done, let's get in there and just finish the paving. So as of tonight at about four thirty, they finished the permanent paving. You'll see the temporary markers for the lanes for about a week to let the pavement set. And then the permanent marking, the striping will be done. So that, that, we wanted to respond to that issue.
City engineer, would you like to provide an update on the work in front of city hall as well?
Sure. So I'm sure you've noticed the trench that is along Tucker Avenue, that is a Cal Water project. Cal Water brought that to the council a few months ago. And they have been doing night work in front of city council to make sure that there is no impact during the day to the city hall and the residents coming to city hall. So they have been working since last week at night to put a new water pipe in front of, here on Tucker Street. What you see out there, the, the pavement, that is temporary pavement. So that's, that's not done. That will be like that until they finish this stretch of Tucker. And they bring in their permanent pavement crew. They'll saw cut a little bit wider of a trench, it's all per city standard. And compact the aggregate base, put down permanent paving. We've been working with Cal Water to make sure we understand the process and how it's going to look in the end. So that's, that's what's out front at city hall. Cal Water has been really good and responsive of issues or questions, making sure that it's clean. We had a few issues the first day that we wanted to go over. Appreciate them coming and standing out there with us and talking about it. We want to make sure it's accessible, safe, and people can drive and access city hall. So any questions on that? That's a quick summary of that project.
I have a quick question, just a follow-up. I know I gave that information to Raina. It was Mr. Gonzalez's address and phone number. And you were going to relate that to?
Yes.
Okay, so was there a fault, I mean, any progress on that or?
Yes, so Raina gave me an address and the address that we wrote down at first council meeting, I had one number off or we had the wrong address.
Okay.
I had looked at an address that was kind of mid-block that had sidewalk. So Raina provided the correct address. We looked at it and that's a corner lot. He has sidewalk in front of his property to the corner, but on the side of the lot, there is no sidewalk. So we've reviewed the different projects. New, putting new sidewalks in, usually we'll put together a CDB project, connectivity sidewalk project. We've been doing some of those in that neighborhood. And I believe this next CDBG cycle continues more sidewalk work in that area. Not specifically that street though. So we discussed with the city manager if we want to create a new project or if we need to try and include that sidewalk with a project. We can look at it, but we typically try and aggregate areas that don't have sidewalk and try and make an effective, efficient project where we can use the funding efficiently. So I, it's not, it's not planned to be a part of a sidewalk project right now, so we would have to add it to a, to a project.
Okay, but they just did part of it and they, and just the other part is not part of it?
The front was not part of a new project. The sidewalk that was out there in front of that, those houses on that block, it's, it's, it's all original or old sidewalk. So I think he had made a comment of whether there was sidewalk over here and they just didn't finish it. All I found is some of the curb returns or the handicap ramps at each corner. We've repaired some of those to make them ADA accessible. But it, it was a few blocks over where, where a CDBG project had created actual sidewalk and, and additional sidewalk. So it, it wasn't, it didn't appear to be a sidewalk project and then it just left that out. I didn't, I didn't see the evidence of that.
Okay, but it could be possibly a project that could be looked at in the future, so they can finish it.
Yeah, as Mr. Horn pointed out, you know, those connectivity projects are primarily funded through CDBG and that's an annual allocation that we get. So it's very likely that at some point it'll be part of allocation for that specific area or that specific street, but we just don't have that planned yet.
If I could finish up, part of, I think what was in the budget for the engineering department was a look at the ADA transition plan. And the city has a transition plan per Title II of the, of ADA. And part of that is taking an inventory of areas that don't have sidewalk. And so part of an overall view of the city, the plan is to really find those sections that sidewalk is just missing and needs to be installed. And that will help us look at the entire city and really try and create projects that can make sure we're adding sidewalk for the residents. So that's a process we'll go through.
And then my last question, did you get a hold of him to let him know?
I haven't talked to him yet, so I'll make sure and follow up.
Okay, thank you.
And that's it for my comments. Thank you, city manager. City attorney, Todd?
Nothing to report.
Deputy city manager, Keen?
Anything to report?
Community services director.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Amy. Fire chief Peterson, I saw his name up there, he's not a, okay. Chief, do you have anything to weigh in on? Are you still there?
Yeah, nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. All right, city clerk, public information officer?
Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, thank you for your continued patience. The, there's a couple of things I want to report on and I will make it really quick. Fresno County has reached out and they will be starting a valley fever campaign based on the two thousand twenty-two incident report. The city of Selma has been identified as one of the highest cases of valley fever. So as part of the healthy lung week that is occurring June twenty-first through June twenty-seventh, Fresno County will be pushing out social media information and just information for the general public, for the city of Selma to promote awareness and assist the city of Selma in that. Also, in addition to Fresno, working with Fresno County to publish some information, we will be working with the Consolidated Mosquito Abatement to publish information regarding national, the National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. As we all know, those mosquitoes are out and about, so we just want to do things like keep doors closed, keep pet door closed, keep unscreened windows closed, make sure that we're dumping waters for all of those plant people. Make sure that we dump any excess water and just continue to clean out our dog bowls and remove anything that we need to take care of. They also wanted to make sure that we're all aware that if we know about a neighbor in our neighborhood that has a pool that has been unattended, to contact them immediately and they will assist with that. As councilmember Mendoza Navarro mentioned earlier during our meeting, there are orange flags everywhere in town. Well, I'll go over them really quickly just so that we're all aware. We've been posting them on social media and putting them on our website. The projects such as the Kailtrans freeway project, as a reminder, the next phase of that project will occur in September. So as of right now, the Floral Avenue on-ramp to northbound State Route ninety-nine has been closed. Southbound lanes on State Route ninety-nine between Manning and Second are reduced from three lanes to two lanes. Temporary stop signs have been placed on the east. Uh, temporary stop signs have been placed on the east and westbound lanes of Second Street near their freeway ninety-nine ramps. Uh, these have been placed there to help with the additional traffic. Golden State Corridor project, that's the Fresno County traffic. That is now scheduled to change or to start in Selma and has been changed to July twenty-fourth. I hope to come back to you with the same information during the next council meeting. Um, so we also have at PG&E performing work on the median of North Street and Branch Street the week of July tenth. Now there was conversation about the Cow Water project that we discussed, we have the Barbara Street Improvement Project that is moving forward. Things and such as the uh, traffic signal lights on McCall Avenue and Barbara Street. I'm sure our citizens have noticed that they've been on the red flash mode, so they will continue to be on the red flash mode only as needed. Once that part moves on, that will change. Uh, Stillman Street and High Street Road Improvement Project is moving forward. Um, Rentlinger Park Playground Project had, will, uh. I think it's already started, the removal of the current playground structure did already start. That's everything I have for you, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Police Chief Alcrist?
Nothing to report.
Uh, council reports, Council Member Mendos and Navarro?
Yes, I attended the uh, Selma Eats on Friday, which was really nice, um, it was good to see people out there. Uh, I did have some people just tell me that they didn't know about it because they don't have social media, so I'm sure the next time we'll, you know, advertise it more. Um, I also attended um, Cho's sixtieth anniversary celebration. Uh, I felt so bad for those, those guys that were doing the dragon dance, oh, they were so, they were sweating. The lion, what is it, the lion dance, yeah, the lion dance, poor guys, um, I did, um, while I was there, uh, Assemblyman, uh, Dr. Arambula was there and so I was able to have a, a real quick conversation with him about housing and infrastructure, so I'll be setting up a meeting. For um, us to have more conversations on that, um. I, we, sorry, and I just wanted to thank, you know, staff, you guys have been working so hard just with everything and, and. Um, you know, it goes to, to the comments that I've made before about, you know, putting. Spes- um, the right people in place in those key positions to help. Implement the vision that we have here in council and so I just really appreciate every one of you, you know, and all your hard work with the budgets. And just with all of these presentations and just continue to move forward with, with just, you know, making that vision that we have. You know, come to fruition, um, a couple of things on a personal note, I'd like to wish my husband a happy birthday today. My granddaughter is turning the big five on Thursday and then happy birthday to my daughter-in-law on Sunday.
And Council Member Triio?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank all our staff on our budget, it was really the, a lot of clarity, of course, because the clarity comes up, then we ask more questions, correct? But, but we're getting there and this is what I've always wanted, uh, since when I got on council, I'm starting to see things and I, I, you know, the questions I had in the past. Have been answered because just, we're just getting more formality, we're getting more, um, what do we call it, we're, we're being more transparent. And it's, and it's really nice to see that, so I congratulate you guys for doing that. In regards to uh, department heads, I wanna thank you guys for all the hard work that you're doing because you guys know that we have people in our community. That believe that they want their thing done the way they want it done, and I know you guys are getting a lot of pressure and I really want you guys to understand. That we really appreciate everything you're doing, uh, there's a vision, the bigger picture is always important. Uh, participated in the Selma sober graduation from nine to twelve, me, Bev, Blanca, we were there, we were walking around. Um, we were there, we were walking around, serving food, we were there, walking around. Um, it was great, it was great, because we were talking to kids and so we, we, we were put to the challenge and we, we participated. Another one, um, participated at, you know, Show's sixtieth anniversary, you know, and, and, you know, like I've said it before, you know, Mike Dur. Uh, Dr. Louis, uh, those are the, my proteges, those are the people that told me, hey, you should do this, you do that. But there's one person that I can honestly tell you, we could yell at each other and I could yell at her and. She will yell back at me and it's Bev and I love you Bev and I thank you and I, 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 I had fun at your event, because you've been, you tell me things and we've been talking since we were. So long, so I, I really had fun there. I don't know if I said this, but I participated in the Selma Bond Oversight Committee, I sit on the board and I, I, we, you know, we talk about what the best interest is for the Selma. School District and I, I, I pledge to you guys that we are moving in a really good direction, this is the expenditures of the Selma uh, school districts. Committees, you know, we're, we're really doing our job, uh, participating in the Selma Eats, actually had some part into it, uh, it's a vision of our community. A vision of our businesses, yeah, it was a really small one, but you know, it was really nice to, you know, to see that. There were residents out there that said, hey, man, this is nice, you know, um, you know, I, I, I'm really happy that the mayor and councilman Garrett were there. Uh, Bev, you were there, Blanca were there, because at the end of the day, you know, whatever we do here, we all love Selma and. We need to bring back more community events, you know, I, I'm gonna state this, in two thousand four, five, I don't know, six, seven, we had the dental fest, the one downtown. And we talked about that, and we had vents, we had events, but, but they all grew it, they all grew it, but they started somewhere. And we, we all wanna make sure that we bring events, but we also wanna cost, we wanna share, so being at the Selma Eats gave me that vision that maybe we can have more events. So for that, I thank staff for, but I wanna say something, um, right, right around ten, nine-thirty, ten o'clock, I started getting the trash cans, you know. Picking up trash and I'll just, any paper I picked up. And a whole group of people that were sitting there just got up and looked at me and put the chairs away and the tables, started walking around with me and picking up trash. And there were our residents at Selma, they said, man, we want the place to look good, so the city will allow you to do it again. And, and that to me gave me a lot of, of energy and told me that, hey, our community really wants to see this, so follow through. Aside of that, I thank you guys all for being able, our staff for going over there and making sure it happened.
Member Garrett?
Um, I had just a short week, I mean, didn't have a whole lot to do, but I do wanna say again, thank you to all the staff. Because I know you guys are working so hard and doing everything you can, and I know sometimes we might ask a little, quite a bit of stuff, but. You know, it helps us make be- better decisions and I wanna thank you guys for all of that. Um, I did attend the street eats and I'm very, very thankful that it finally was here, you know, we've talked about it and. And that's what it's about, you know, it might have just been something small this time, but that's how it continues, you can do it bigger and better next time. So, we'll keep, we'll keep at it, you know, we'll just, um. Not a whole lot, I mean, yeah, they, the advertisement was, you could barely read it, you know, that was, we need to improve on that. And then get the word out a little more. And then just kind of like we said, just make it bigger and better next time, but other than that, um, that's, that's pretty much it for me and. Again, I just wanna thank everyone for everything you guys do.
Mayor Pretem Cho?
Yes, I'd like to thank you all, you guys for hard work, all you guys do too, so to keep us straight also. Um, I did get a, a pretty neat uh, email, it's from uh, Mr. Chorosian from the Kaiser Permanente. Uh, they awarded a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to our senior meal program, it's gonna last from July first to twenty-three to six-thirty, twenty-four. And this came about, like, when I first became a councilperson, this Mr. Chorosian called me and talked about our city. And he says, what do you think needs to help at Senior Center? So it's pretty amazing, you know, like you said, then I think this is the second year, right? Yes, so I was like, you know, it was just a call, phone call, we were just talking and I was brand new, I didn't even know what I was talking about probably. But I, you know, I have a passion for our seniors in Selma, so, so I, that's all it took, so thank you. Uh, also, like you say, my celebration went not really well, this is the only place I was able to buy the chief, his wife and city manager a beer, that's pretty good. So we did all, as I say, have a really good time and it showcased a lot of memories. We had a lot of different people came in and one of my line member wrote on a card to me, it was really nice, it says. If you looked at all the chairs and the tables in this place, everybody that sat there had a story, so I thought that was a really nice card that I got, so. Uh, than that, I think that's it for me, thank you.
Thanks, we have any public comment tonight before we adjourn?
I just have a question, um, today was a federal holiday, Juneteenth, it was also a state holiday. The post office, banks, everybody was closed, but the city of Selma was not closed. Um, did the employees not get that holiday or has it been moved to another day?
A lot of businesses that weren't closed, we were open.
Well, I mean, retail, yeah, retail, you put a sale sign on everything, but I'm talking about uh, city governments and federal government and. County was closed.
A sale sign, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that, we put a sale sign on everything?
No, no, actually, retail businesses usually don't close, they use a holiday as an excuse to have a Memorial Day sale or whatever. But I'm talking about city government, um, county, uh, state, federal, banks, they were all closed today. And I was just curious as to why the city wasn't closed.
Thank you, Ms. Salz, um, you know, uh, the city, city holidays are more a matter of like the um, employee relations and. Um, MOUs, so if the council wanted to add that as a holiday that city employees have off, that's a, a discussion that could be had, uh, but thank you.
Other comments?
Ten fifty-seven Mill Street, Rose Robertson. So the Tejano Country Concert actually started at the Selma Art Center, that was the very first one. And it was three hundred and sixty seats that were sold out in a week, so we realized, um, we were gonna need to move it to the. Street, which was High Street, which was also um, very successful, then overcrowded and went to the Pioneer Village. Um, but one thing the citizens didn't like, we weren't, they weren't able to dance in the art center, so that was definitely not even another try. Um, I'd like to congratulate the city of Ridley, they receive uh, body cams for the police officers. Hopefully, um, I'd like to thank the citizens of Selma that are reaching out to Jim Costa, hopefully we'll be getting um, those uh, body cams for our. Um, uh, police officers and first, um, um. Um, in August, I know we'll know about a grant and um, just continue to reach out to Jim Costa, really. Let's hope for those body cams for the liability aspect of it and to review those uh, body cams for training for our officers, that'd be great, thank you.
Their comments, anybody online or on the phone? Okay, with that, we're adjourned, thank you everybody for coming out to me.